It is Monday, December 3rd, 6:30 PM. If we can have, we have a troop here, a Girl Scout troop, that's going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. It is Girl Scout Troop 1374 from Parton Elementary. Ladies, why don't you come on up? And everybody rise, please. Yules, just tap on that mic, let's make sure it's on. There you go, it's yours. Flag is there, and it's all yours, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Great job, ladies, thank you. You would do us the honors, please.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Chief.
And just a reminder, next week is our Santa Run Week around town, so we're excited to prepare and get that off the ground again. This marks our 40th year.
Wow.
If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so. Father God, we ask special blessings tonight, and health and safety for our newly-elected council member and our re-elected council members, and extend that to their families. We thank those who seek a life of public service, that want to do the right things for this community. We pray for them, Lord, tough decisions to make, give them guidance and wisdom in all that they do. And tonight, our nation mourns as we recognize, memorialize, the loss of our 41st President, George Bush. Lord, we pray for their family tonight, and all the family and friends, all the cabinet members that worked with them. The next couple of days be tough for many people, and we pray, Lord, that you are by their side, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. And for those who do not know, Chief is retiring, so we only have him two more times for that. I don't know, Brian, he could just lose that paperwork, and everything will be good.
You got it.
All right, so this time I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is a meeting of the City Council, it's our regular meeting, it's Monday, December 3rd, it's approximately 6:34 PM. We are going to move the agenda around just a little bit, and we are going to take one of our presentations, which is presentation to Councilmember Sladek, who has decided not to run for reelection, and will no longer be with us. We have a resolution that we are going to present her, so if the council can join me down front. Also, I should add that we moved it around, because your daughter is at a band concert tonight, right?
Yes.
Over at Jackson Heights?
It's actually at Hagerty, it's so big.
It's at Hagerty High, it's so big.
Well, there you go, so that way we can get the councilwoman out, and she can go see her daughter. So we have a resolution, and we present one of these to everybody who has served on City Council. And this is a resolution of the City of Oviedo, Florida, honoring Councilmember Sladek. Whereas Megan Sladek is a native daughter of the City of Oviedo, and whereas her interest in civic affairs led her to choose to run for City of Oviedo City Council in 2016, and whereas Megan Sladek served the City of Oviedo as City Councilmember from December 5th, 2016, to tonight, December 3rd, 2018. Whereas Megan Sladek contributed much time and energy in her service to the City of Oviedo as a councilmember, and whereas Megan Sladek put forth great effort to inform citizens and encouraging citizen involvement and input into the city government. Whereas the City of Oviedo wishes Megan Sladek continues to success in her future endeavors, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Oviedo, Florida, that the mayor and the City Council, on behalf of the entire Oviedo community, honors Megan Sladek for her service as a City Councilmember from 2016 to 2018. It's presented this day, we've all signed it, and has a city seal. Thank you so much. Got a drink?
Thank you.
No. Thank you. Enjoy the concert. Do we need to leave now?
Yeah, no, no, we're gonna need a few minutes.
Yep.
As you gentlemen, we have to dispose of one bit of business.
All righty. Our first order of business, the approval of the minutes for the November 5th, 2018 regular session. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have motion, multiple seconds. Any discussion?
No, sir, looks good.
Hearing none, call the vote, all in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, so now, we're gonna bounce back up, and come off the dais, because we are going to have three members take their oaths of office, which is an exciting time, and congratulations to everybody who either won reelection, or won, where is Chief? Won election. So, guys, why don't we step off, and we'll turn it over to Bill, who's going first? Chief, are you going first? Guys, we'll do Chief first? All righty. Chief, come on up, with your family, where's Cheryl?
Wherever you want.
And I'm gonna get out of the way.
Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
State of Florida.
State of Florida.
And the City of Oviedo.
City of Oviedo.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance to the same.
Loyalty and allegiance to the same.
That I am entitled to hold the office.
Entitled to hold the office.
Of City Councilmember under the Constitution.
Of City Councilmember under the Constitution.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of Councilmember.
Duties of the office.
Office of the Councilmember.
Of the City of Oviedo.
Of the City of Oviedo.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, Bill, you're up. Bob, you're up. After your final.
name.
Aye, Bob Pollak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
And the City of Oviedo.
The City of Oviedo.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
That I will bear and true faith and loyalty.
That I will bear and true faith and loyalty.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I am entitled to hold the office.
That I am entitled to hold the office.
Of Councilmember under the Constitution.
Of Councilmember under the Constitution.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember of the City of Oviedo.
Of Councilmember of the City of Oviedo.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Aye, Keith Britton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Florida.
The State of Florida.
And the City of Oviedo.
And the City of Oviedo.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
Against all enemies, domestic and foreign.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And I am entitled to hold the office of Councilmember.
And I am entitled to hold the office of Councilmember.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Councilmember.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Councilmember.
Of the City of Oviedo.
Of the City of Oviedo.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, sir, congratulations.
All righty, with that all being said and done, we are going to take a brief recess. Everybody can millipede, get pictures, and we'll reconvene in about 10 minutes. Looks like I have all members back up here. Councilman Schenk, just keep going, you know where the door is. All right. So we're moving on in our agenda, we're up to item number four, let me just catch up And this is the election of our Presiding Officer and our Deputy Mayor. So as always, we will open up nominations for Presiding Officer first.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to renominate you to stay as Presiding Officer.
Second. Motion and a second, any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close it, and call the vote, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to the election of Deputy Mayor. Nominations, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Pollak for Deputy Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, are there any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close nominations and call the vote, all in favor of the motion for Councilman Pollak to be Deputy Mayor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Bob, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully I won't go anywhere or die, but if we do, the city's in good hands. And oh, by the way, you have a meeting to go to on Wednesday, I'll let you know what it is. Let's see.
I've learned, his schedule is too busy, and not going there.
Let's see, we are up to our FERDAP Grant Award, why don't I turn this over to Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. In May of this year, we were notified that the city was awarded a FERDAP grant in the amount of $50,000 for Long Lake Park, excuse me. Robert Brooks from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection is here tonight to present a ceremonial check for the grants, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Brooks.
All righty, great, why don't we all kind of come on down up front, we'll grab the microphone.
It's my pleasure to be here again. This is the second grant that I've actually presented to the City of Oviedo, from the FERDAP program, the Florida Recreational Development Assistance Program, so on behalf of Secretary Wallenstein, I'd like to present you this check for Long Lake Park, in the amount of $50,000.
Well, that is awesome.
Thank you very much.
Well, this will go to good use, Drew, what are you putting in this choice?
Playground, uh...
Program?
Yeah, long, playground, renovation, the one shelter, and I think Hawaiian Stadium.
Over in Long Lake Park.
Long Lake Park.
That is awesome, thank you so very much for coming down.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here again.
We appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Commissioners?
Thank you so much. Did you bring the real one?
It's in the motion.
Oh, okay. It's in the mail.
It's in the mail. Thank you again. So, let's see what we got going on next. Make sure we have public comment. All righty, so we got our ceremonial items done, I'm going to open up the floor to public comment, this is the audience's time, if you have anything you'd like to address council on, that's not on the agenda, or is in the consent agenda, now would be your time to speak on that item. I do have a written request, the first one is from Tommy Minton. Tommy, just name and address for the record, do you know the drill?
I know the drill. Tommy Minton, 1343 Ellis Fallon Loop, Oviedo, Florida 32765. So honorable councilmembers, city staff, members of the audience, I do thank you for allowing me the time to speak in front of you all again this evening. Many of you know me, and I would hope that by now I've earned some trust and respect these past few years, as I've become much more involved with the city. Two years ago, on almost the same night, this council approved my application for the local planning agency board, and I have proudly served on that board for the past two years. I have not missed a single meeting, and have been actively engaged during that time. When I joined the board, I did so for two main reasons, to learn more about the city government process, and to make a difference for the residents of this city. To that first point, I've learned a great deal. I feel that I have a much better understanding of the comprehensive plan, and how that plan influences zoning and development decisions. From speaking with staff, I have a better understanding of what applicants go through when applying for deviations for the city code, and I feel I've served with dedicated citizens that have a great appreciation for the work that staff goes through, to make this a great city to live and raise a family. To the second point, I spent my time on the board looking for ways to management, development, and growth, while at the same time respecting the rights of property owners. I asked questions of staff and applicants, we were able to approve some deviations from homeowners looking to beautify their property. We attempted to tackle traffic and parking issues around the city, in fact, I've asked repeatedly to take another look at the parking requirements in the city code, as I don't feel that they provide enough for what ultimately is a commuter community. We started to come up with ideas of how to improve the traffic flow, but it's gonna certainly be a work in progress, and an issue I had hoped to continue to push to the forefront. Unfortunately, I also learned that the powers of the LPA Board are more limiting than what I assumed, or possibly had hoped they would be. Many of the major resolutions or ordinances don't seem to come through the board before coming to you at the council. And for those that do come in front of the board, there seems to be very little legal recourse for challenging requests and findings of the staff. I feel that I'm unable to make any significant differences, and I certainly do not feel that I can adequately represent the best interests of the citizens of Oviedo. So sadly, I'm left to make the following decision. In your packet tonight, you will find my request for reappointment to the LPA Board for another two-year term. I respectfully rescind that request, and ask that the council members choose to appoint another qualified applicant to the spot. I hope that you all understand and appreciate the decision I've made here, it is certainly nothing... nothing personal. I do intend to complete my term at tomorrow evening's meeting, and then stay engaged with the city in an unofficial role. I again, wanna personally thank you all for allowing me to serve on the board the past years, it's just time for me to move on to other endeavors. And I realize I could've just mailed all this in, but I felt like the only right thing to do was to come up here and personally look you in the eyes, thank you, and, you know, hold to respect my decision.
Tommy, you'll be missed, and we do thank you for your service. You know, it's been a pleasure having you there, so, and I hope you did learn a lot.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Tommy. Thank you, Tommy. And wait, before you go, Go Tigers.
Go Tigers.
For those who don't know, Clemson grad here, so... Tommy, who are you guys? Oh, Notre Dame. Yeah, you should have no problem there. Alrighty, is there any other comment from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda this evening are items number eight through 18. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Councilman Henkin?
No, sir, everything looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Just wanna congratulate our firefighters on coming to an agreement with us, we appreciate you guys, and hope we did right by you.
I was gonna pull that item off. Councilman Chudnow? That's gonna take me a while to get used to.
All's good.
All good? Deputy Mayor?
Hey, he got that right, he got that right on the first one.
How did you pick up that so quick? It took you two years to figure out I was Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to thank the firefighters and congratulate you on a successful negotiation with the contract, and we welcome you to many more years of service, and look forward to it. I also wanted to just kind of highlight the plug, I keep forgetting the name of it now, Park and Plug. With Duke Energy, you'll be able to find other areas to plug in your vehicles, Mayor.
I know, I'm looking forward to it. Actually, that's for, I think there's gonna be a charging station here and a couple at Oviedo on the Park, right? Be awesome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just quick, Fireman, once we approve this, you guys can all leave, you don't have to feel like you have to stay, but I will always give credit where credit's due. Again, last night, my dad had a medical emergency, I made a call to one of our battalion chiefs, Dave, and I have to tell you that these guys, I say it all the time, there's no place I'd rather be in an emergency, the care that Dad got last night, and he was looking in rough shape from these guys, is incredible. Their bedside manner and the ambulance is great, and he's doing well tonight, so, thank you so much, well deserved, and that badge will always say "Oviedo" as long as I sit here, so, take comfort in that. Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Looks good.
Alrighty, I'll leave 18 on there then. Alrighty, we will call the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table to adopt the consent agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. There you go, congratulations, everyone. Everybody who had anything on consent agenda can now, don't feel bad, we understand. Alrighty. Moving along, we're up to item number 19, which is Resolution Number 3651-18 Infotainment Center Special Exception Use Order. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Cobb for a brief explanation.
Alright, thank you, Mayor, this is a request for council to approve special exception use order number 201-18 for Infotainment Center, it's an original equipment manufacturer, car navigation upgrades. It also contains a warehouse component. The subject property is, consists of 3.64 acres and is generally located on the south side of Geneva Drive, approximately 200 feet southeast of the corner of Geneva Drive and Lake Charm Drive, Lloyd Lane. The warehouse component is what is requiring the special exception use order warehouse is permissible in the C2 zoning district with the issuance of a special exception use order. The property's future land use designation is commercial, it does have a C2 zoning district. This will allow the warehouse storage use component for the business on the subject property, ensure that the use is permitted, and that it will not adversely impact adjacent land uses within the median vicinity. Tonight, the city council, well, the staff reviewed the application per the criteria contained in the Land Development Code, and based on their findings, the staff recommends approval. The city council is asked to conduct a public hearing, this is the second public hearing that will be done, the LPA held a public hearing on November the 6th, and they're at recommended approval. I has recommended the city council conduct a public hearing, and then approve, adopt Resolution Number 3651-18.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, but this time, I'd like to give the applicant first, and then I'll open up a public hearing.
My name is David Axel, 1757 West Broadway Street, Suite 1, Oviedo, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant and property owner. The applicant concurs with the staff recommendation and requests that the council approve this matter tonight, and we're here to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. As mentioned, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address council on Resolution Number 3651-18? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion. Does council have any questions of the applicant before I move on? Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to the pleasure of council. Need a motion on Resolution 3651-18.
Chief, hit the first one, get it off your chest, there you go, make the motion.
I move approval of Resolution 3651-18.
The restroom will be totally...
Second.
There you go.
Oh, motion and a second. Well, Chief, you made the, council member, you made the motion? You've got the floor.
I'm good.
Nope. Councilman Pollak, Deputy Mayor Pollak?
It looks really nice, I think it's gonna really add to that area over there, it's a great-looking building, and I can't wait to see it.
Guy on the end?
I'm good.
Good?
Good.
Seeing that he says I forget him, so... Alrighty, seeing that we have no questions, I will call the question on Resolution Number 3651-18. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to first reading of ordinances, we have none of those, so let me just catch up here to item number 21, which is Resolution Number 3674-18. This is a site development order, final engineering, number 494-18, for the preserve at Oviedo on the Park, Lot 10S, office, apartment, and future development. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This request for city council to approve site development order number 494-18, in this item, you will be acting in your role as land use administrator. The subject property is Lot 10S of the Oviedo on the Park development. The property has a land area of approximately 4.07 acres. The property's future land use designation is downtown mixed use, its zoning district is New Downtown District Sub-District B. The proposed development is a office building, it's a multi-story office building, and it also has one apartment within it. The staff reviewed the application, and for the compliance with the Land Development Code, the staff does recommend approval, the application does include some deviations to the Land Development Code, mostly dealing with buffers and placement of trees. Also, the applicant is requesting that the city council grant an alternative design per LDC Section 8.784(c)(7), this is in Architectural Standards, and it regards lighting. This is to allow them to provide light pole bases that are tapered, when fluted bases are the design that are mostly in Oviedo on the Park, but the tapered bases go more with the design of the property. It gets more in with the intent and overall design, and so therefore, staff's recommending that the council grant the alternative design for the light poles. Also, the applicant is requesting that the city council delegate its land use administrator authority to the Development Services Director to approve future revisions to the site development order. One, to allow the fourth floor residential unit to be converted to an office use, and then two, revisions to the extent that the general design intent is not modified, that there are no new or increased deviations, there are no substantial impacts to the mitigations of the deviations, and a determination has been made that the change is consistent with sound and generally accepted engineering land use practices and principles, and there is no increase in intensity of use. These would be for minor, what we would call tweaks in the design as they get into the construction, and the applicant is asking that you grant the authority to the Development Services Director to approve those types of changes. Staff also has reviewed this, staff recommends approval. I has recommended that the city council adopt Resolution Number 3674-18.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb, is the applicant present?
David Axel, 1757 West Broadway Street, Suite 1, here representing the two property owners that were the applicant on this matter. We concur with the staff recommendation, there is one point to cover, after the agenda was distributed and posted, we had discussed removal of condition of approval item three, so I'm just asking that with your motion tonight, based on what was published, that you adopt the staff recommendation with the removal of condition of approval number three, and I believe the staff would concur with that request, and I'm here for any questions again, thank you.
Which one is number three, Mr. Axel?
Number three was regarding further traffic analysis of the driveway location. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience like to open this up for public comment? Anybody in the audience like to address council on Resolution Number 3674-18?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to approve Resolution... Oh, sorry.
Open up a public hearing?
Oh, sorry.
Relax. Boy, give him a title. Alrighty, we will close the public comment portion, Deputy Mayor, it's yours.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 3674-18, as the staff's recommended, with the removal of condition of approval number three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
It looks good, looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Yes, just as a formality, Teresa, you agree with the removal? Alright, I'm good.
Councilman Henkin?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, so, everything we've done in Oviedo on the Park, we have always been the land use administrator, not that we liked it, but at that time, we felt the need to look at it. I have a little bit of a problem granting it for this project. I think we should still be consistent and take a look at what's out there, that's what we've always done, and I think it just, if we grant it on this one, anything else that comes out there, we gotta have the same issue, so, I have great respect for the developer and their consultants, but I think that we should consider not removing that. That's my two cents.
Councilman Chudnow? That is really gonna take getting used to.
It's getting used to hearing it, too. I'm good with the project, I do kind of agree with Councilman Henkin on changing what the council has done in the past.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say, I'm okay with the delegation, 'cause I'm afraid that when this, when these small, minor changes occur, it takes about a month to get on the council agenda, and can delay the project significantly. I leave it up to the land use administrator, or the person that was delegated it, to make that decision of whether it's minor, or should be something that we should reconsider.
Okay. Mr. Cobb, can you, or Dr. Krieger, whoever would like to, can you explain to us what they're asking for with that? Because quite frankly, I don't quite sure I know if I'm comfortable with that, I mean, we put that in place for a reason.
So, city council is the land use administrator for any project in Oviedo on the Park. You are approving the project, what they are requesting, if there are minor changes in the project that will not require new deviations, or any changes in the deviations granted, that staff could approve. And as Councilmember Pollak said, if there is any changes, and sometimes there is a change in, you know, in the site plan that we have to amend the site plan, and if it complies with the code, and complies with the project that is approved, and doesn't require any deviations, then we would be the ones doing the approval. If it's required to come to council, yes, it extends the...
But what's the threshold?
The threshold is that there is no new deviations being proposed. If there are minor changes to the project, that there are no, that does not mean a new deviation, or a change in the deviation that you're granting, then we could do. Then we could approve. You have already approved ones for architectural review, for architectural design orders, you approved something similar for Stonehill. So that's not...
But Stonehill's not inside of Oviedo on the Park?
No, but architectural design orders are brought to council, so council is the approving authority, so you gave staff that authority. If, after the project was approved, if there are minor changes that do not reflect in any new deviations being granted, then staff could approve. So that's what he's, the applicant is requesting, at this point.
Right, but this is, according to what we have here, this is final engineering, so there really shouldn't be any changes at this point. I mean, that's what it says, it says site development order, final.
Well, there is one change that may occur, is the use on the fourth floor, that is, they are presenting as a residential unit, as an apartment, that they may convert to an office, so that would be a change for the, in the site plan.
And that would come back to us?
If we don't have the authority, yes, because it would be an amendment to the site plan. So they placed that condition, and then they placed another one, that if there are minor changes in the site plan, for any, you know, engineering, you know, reason, that we would be the ones amending the site.
Alright, well, let me ask you a question then, to Councilman Henkin's point, we grant this, there's one, two, three, four, five other lots out there, so how do we say no to the next person?
Well, you're opening precedent for others to ask the same thing.
Right, so the next one's gonna come in and ask us for the same thing, and we've cracked the door open, yeah, I don't think I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If this was not in Oviedo on the Park, if it was somewhere else in the city, after this was granted, the land use administrator, which I believe it's the city manager, would be able to grant these anywhere else in the city, it's just because it's Oviedo on the Park that makes it special.
Yeah. In the rest of the city, a site plan would only come to city council if there are deviations greater than 20%. So if we approve a project, and the project doesn't have, you know, an increased deviation, or a smaller change in the site plan, we would be the ones reviewing and approving it.
So as long as, so if this were to pass the way it is, as long as it meets the requirements of the code, whatever the change is, then you would approve it? If there was any deviation, it would come back to us?
Or any change in the deviations requested, would come back to you.
Right, okay. I'm comfortable with that, I think that it's, this is something that, you know, the small changes, or some of these minor changes can cause great delays in these projects, so, that's just my thought.
That's understandable. Anybody have anything to add? Yes.
It's, yeah, it kinda goes back to the way we do business, if they requested a change, we would have to document that change correctly, and so that we know what the configuration of the building is, and the uses. I went through this when I did an addition on my house, the city wants to have clear drawings, and they require the buildings to be built per the drawings, versus some other places where they say, just make sure it meets code. We have a stricter, or it's not really stricter, it's just a different standard, so that when we get done, the configuration of what was proposed to be built is actually built. Small changes, I'm not really worried about, as long as they meet code, and they meet the intent of the code, and the standards of the Oviedo on the Park, I don't see a need to come back here for a deviation that we'll probably approve anyway. So it's just a different way of looking at how we do business, whether it's a chicken or an egg type thing, so, I'm pretty much okay with minor changes, if it needs a deviation that's significant... If it needs a deviation that's significant, I think it would come back to us anyway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Kriya?
And just to clarify, the architectural design order has already been approved. So we are just talking about the site plan.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, could I offer something maybe as a compromise on this idea? Figuring a little bit off what Dr. Kriya just said, that if you took the second one about the revisions, that it would be revisions to the site plan, not the architectural plans. And that, you know, you're still the approval body for the architectural plans, and so you could specify in the order that it would just be for the site development plans and the engineering plans, so that the architectural plans would not be part of it. The other part that you could look at as well is to retain your authority over a change of use. If you're changing the use from the apartment to the office, you could retain that authority because that is—that could be determined as something significant, changing from an apartment to office, because that's going to affect parking, that's going to affect traffic, that's going to affect a number of things that you may want to look at. But if you wanted—if that would give comfort to those that are not feeling as comfortable about this, if you wanted to make sure that it just pertain to the engineering plans—I haven't had a chance to discuss this with Mr. Axel, I was dealing with something else today. But if you wanted to—if that would give you more comfort, that would be something that you could consider.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Any questions for Mr. Cobb?
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir.
Is the office a permissible use for this?
Yes. Well, it's an office building with an apartment on top.
Right, so—to make that change, it would still be making a change—
To a permissible use.
—to a permissible use. It's not like there's a—whether they're trying to do something that's not permissible.
No.
So, okay.
Any other questions? Who's my motioner? I didn't write it down.
I was the motioner.
Who's the second?
The guy was.
Okay. So Deputy Mayor, I do not suppose that you would like to amend your motion to remove the staff approval of deviations.
I do not.
Okay. Second are agree with that, or second are gonna remove their second?
I'm okay with the way it is. If we want to do the compromise, I'm okay with the compromise.
Okey-dokey. And we'll call the vote on the way it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Would it be—would you be more comfortable and Councilman Hankin with Mr. Cobb's suggestion on if that the apartment would change to office, then it would come back, but other than that, on the site plan itself, be okay for the staff to make those changes—to approve those changes?
I just—you know, I just think that we built that, and I always remind everybody, Oviedo on the Park was voter-approved, wasn't council-approved. This is their project, and we were asked several years ago to look at every aspect of it, and I do realize it takes a little time, but, you know, sometimes it's good not to rush things, and it's good to look at things. And not that I don't have tremendous faith in my staff or the city manager or anybody to look at it, but they gave us that for a reason, and I'm not willing to give it up. I mean, it's—the mayor said there's five more lots, there's a few things that come out there, and I just want to make sure it comes out right. You know, everybody made great points, the compromise was good, but I think that that one issue just is a problem for me, so.
I appreciate this debate. I'm perfectly comfortable, and I think everyone will be fine. If you want to remove the condition so that we don't have this issue here tonight, it's fine, that entire condition.
We'll keep in three that you want.
The—remove Number Three, but this whole thing about flexibility, I was just trying to facilitate future unknown changes. If it comes out, it's really not that big an issue. I'd rather have you guys comfortable. So that's fine with me if the motioner wants to go along with that. That's all.
Thank you. Motioner?
All right, since applicant's okay with it, then I'm fine with removing it.
Removing the—
The condition.
Deviation condition.
Yes.
Second are agree?
I agree, and just to clarify, it's the second paragraph on number—page Number Three. Is that correct, Brian?
Uh, no, sir. It would be—
What are we removing?
It would be Condition of Approval Number Five on the Site Development Order.
I was just reading the memo.
All righty, so—
It would also be Section Three of the Resolution. So you would want to delete Section Three of the Resolution, and then delete Section Fi—uh, Condition of Approval Number Five on the Site Development Order.
Does the motioner agree?
I agree.
Seconder?
I agree.
All righty.
Did Barbara get it?
Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I am going to call the vote on the motion as amended, removing Condition Five and Section Three of the Resolution. All those in favor of that?
Section Three and—
Section Three is what Mr. Cobb said.
Of the Resolution.
Three and Five.
So it would be, yeah, two conditions, Condition Three and Condition Five, and then Section Three of the Resolution.
I don't see a Section Three in this resolution.
It's on Page Two.
Page Two.
Okay, all right, got it.
Got it? All righty.
Agreed.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as amended and restated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All righty, moving along. We are up to annual appointment and reappointment to City Boards. So give me just a second, we'll get over there. All right, so currently we have five positions with four members requesting reappointment to the five positions. So since we have that, we will call them one at a time and take nominations on each seat. So we have five seats, and we have—hang on a second. Put my pad out. We have five seats and four members requesting reappointment, and applicants from one, two, three, four, five others. So let's just call it out by—let's Seat One. Any nominations for the first seat?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like to nominate Emma Reichert.
Any other nominations for Seat One? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All righty, so now we are going to have Seat Two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Moore.
Any other nominations for Seat Two?
Wait, hold on. Who did he nominate?
Kathy Moore.
We gotta go back to the—
Oh, you're going through that's—that's an—okay, got it.
On me alone.
Gotcha, okay.
All righty, so I'm just giving these seat numbers just for clarity. Seat Two, we have a nomination for Kathy Moore. Any others? Seeing and hearing none, close the vote, call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All righty, Seat Three, need nominations.
Seat Three, whose seat is that currently?
There is no—
You're going by numbers?
It's fictitious. Just a fictitious number. We have three seats to fill.
I'll nominate Larry Wright.
Larry Wright.
Lawrence Wright.
Lawrence, Larry. All righty, so we have Larry Wright. Any others? Seeing and hearing none, I will close nominations and call the vote. All in favor of Larry Wright, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're up to open—let's just call them Seat Four. Need nominations.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Todd Sykes.
Todd Sykes. All righty, any other nominations? Seeing and hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of Todd Sykes, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Seat Five, last seat to fill. Need nominations. Yes.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Lopez.
We have a nomination for Darryl Lopez. Any others? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of Darryl Lopez, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All righty. You got all that, Barbara?
Yes.
All righty, so we have our five members, and there were two others, I think, that were—
They're not up.
They're not up, okay.
Right.
So we got five members on the board. All right, we have one police pension board position open. We have one position with a term to expire December 31st, 2018, and we have one applicant in nomination.
Should we interview that applicant?
You know, I certainly would.
I think we should call him up here. Is he here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like to nominate Justin Varconi to be reappointed.
All righty. Any other nominations on the floor? Seeing and hearing none, I will close nominations, and we will vote on the appointment of Justin Varconi. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
He's been an officer for 19 years?
Yes.
Yes, he has.
How the heck did that happen?
Remember when he was first hired?
Former officer of the year.
Yes, he was.
Well, congratulate him, chief.
All right, so moving along, we've got the board appointments all done. We are up to City Manager's report. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Councilman Chudnow. I'm looking forward to working with you. Also, Mayor, I received an email from the Tri-County League of Cities. There is a roundtable with Representative David Smith. It's Thursday at 1:00 at Lake Mary City Hall. They were wondering if a member of the council could attend the roundtable, and so I wanted to ask if any of you have availability on your schedule to attend.
Why don't you send out an email, and then we'll all see where we're at.
Okay. I do need to let them know tomorrow if possible, so.
Okay. I'll check my calendar, see if I can go.
And since this is our one and only meeting in December, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays.
I'm sorry, what time is that?
It's at 1:00. It's from 1:00 to 2:00.
With David Smith?
Yes, sir.
I think that's a chamber luncheon that day.
Yes, sir, it is. It's a chamber luncheon. I know we had some conference.
See how we can be at two places at one time. I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb, go ahead and—
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Colbert?
Thank you, Mayor. It's always good to be with you. I have nothing to add for the gift of the order tonight, except to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Colbert. Same to you, as always. We appreciate when you come on out and visit us and do the swearing-ins.
All right. Good to be here.
Uh, well, you are no longer deputy mayor. Councilman Britton?
Just getting used to that.
It's gonna take me the whole year, come on.
It's been a long time since we met. There's a bunch going on, and I'm gonna try to abbreviate this, because I got a whole list here.
You can knock off some from our list, so have at it.
I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens for allowing me to serve one more term up here. It's something I don't take very lightly, and I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm gonna do the best I can over the next two years to get stuff done up here. Having said that, Brian, I'm not gonna go through this whole list, but we've got a slew of emails on pickleball and what we're gonna do about that, and I know you're looking into that, but I'd like to make sure we take a good, hard look at it and see if we can accommodate those requests, as well as the bear ordinance that we've been requested. I think, Patrick, you've been sending out emails to those that have been writing in about the bear ordinance and what we're doing. You know, I think we're doing a great job trying to address the issue, and I think we'll be fine with how it comes out. Real quickly, there's a Calno meeting, the first Calno meeting of—actually, the last Calno meeting of the year is on Wednesday at the Sanford Zoo, and Chief Councilman Chudnow, if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to attend. And let's see what else we got. Got another email, and this is a citizen-in-action-type email, requesting Riverside Park allow scooters. I think they allow scooters out there alone, but we got another email to see if they can allow what other skate parks do, allow scooters to attend with other skateboarders. Again, Drew, if you can look at that, tell us what your opinions are and issues and concerns, and see if we can accommodate. And finally, just for a notification, we got an email from—I believe it was Commissioner Constantine—that we have been awarded a designation of the best place to hold an event at our Oviedo on the Park. And if you were there last Thursday, you'll understand why we got that designation, because that was a really, really great time at the tree lighting, despite the Grinch that showed up, but we took care of that guy real quick, you know, thanks to Cindy Lou Who. So that's all I got, and everyone have a great holidays and be safe.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm off. I'll be real brief. Host of events coming up throughout the city. As we said, it'd just be hard to list them all, so I encourage everybody to go to cityofoviedo.net, take a look at the calendar. I mean, just this week, ugly sweater, hence what's up on the wall, and dueling pianos. This weekend, Snow Mountain, right? And the holiday parade. I'm sorry?
Santa's Ball.
I couldn't hear you.
Santa's Ball.
Oh, Santa's Ball, okay. Santa's Calls. Santa around town next week. I mean, it's just a busy time of the year here at the city, and lots of events. And as Councilman Britton said, you know, the tree lighting event, Drew, staff did an incredible job this year. I mean, knocked it out of the park. There were thousands of people out there at the park that evening, and I can't wait to see what they're gonna do at Snow Mountain, because I heard it's Snow Mountain on steroids this year, is what I was told. So we are certainly looking forward to that event. With all that being said, welcome to the council members who have been reelected, and to our new council member. Welcome. And it's—see what we can get done over this next year or two for the betterment of the citizens of the city of Oviedo, as we have been doing for the last 20 years. One last shout-out has to go to the UCF football team. Anybody who watched that game, who was at that game, it was electric. I mean, between Cincinnati, going to USF, having what happened to KZ, who most may not realize is actually a citizen of the city of Oviedo. He lives here in the city, him and his mom and family. And to come back like they did against a very tough Memphis team, and now they're going out to play LSU, so we are gonna go—we are gonna go out there and have some fun. So congratulations to UCF and Patrick. That flag will be flying on, let's see—
New Year's Day.
Yeah, New Year's Day. Make sure that flag is up before you guys all skedaddle out of town. So, oh, wait, we can't break it. You'll have to come in, raise the flag the day before, and then you can leave town. How's that sound?
Can we just put it up now and just leave it?
No, 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 no. You can't break the mojo. The mojo's been, the flag goes up the day before, and if the flag happens to be at half-staff, then it goes in the lobby. So we gotta just keep it all the way it is. You don't wanna ruin a thing. Come on, I have one hat that I've worn all season. I'm not changing.
You gotta stand away from him now.
I didn't say one shirt. I said one. All righty, with all that being said, just Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah. I think Hanukkah started last evening, if I'm not mistaken.
Last night.
Last night, right, Chief?
No.
Okay. Happy Hanukkah to all those who celebrate, and a very Happy New Year, because we won't be back until January—
Seven.
—7th we come back. So it's gonna be about a month off, and that's usually a fairly light agenda on the 7th, and usually the 22nd is the big one. So we'll see if that holds true. Oh, Mr. Cobb's smirk.
We'll see.
We'll see. Historically, let me rephrase. Historically, that's the way it's been. With all that being said, Deputy Mayor Pollock, you are up.
All right, I just wanted to thank the citizens again for having the trust and their support in me and reelected me for another two years, another term. I'm gonna do my best to make sure I stand as a voice for the citizens. The tree lighting, Drew, was great. That was amazing this year. Please give your staff, you know, thanks from all of us up here. You all make us look good all the time. And then we, I look forward to the Snow Mountain this weekend and the parade and everything. So you do a great job. And I do have the buckets for the candy and stuff that I gotta give back to. Let's see, what else? Oh, welcome. I'm so happy to see you up here and...
Thank you.
Continue your service for the city. I know you're gonna do an awesome job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. We'll see you next year.
All righty. Councilman Hankin, you're up.
All right, just a couple things. Congratulations, chief, Bob, Keith, oh, good wins. I always kind of put myself in the spot of Citizen Hankin instead of Councilman Hankin, that I have three people up here that'll always be dedicated to 40,000 people. And, you know, having sat up here with you guys and Chief worked with you for all these years, you know, the citizens are in good hands. So sometimes it's a tough job, but you guys do it well. So congratulations, congratulations, Mr. Deputy Mayor. That's well deserved. Let's see. The mayor touched on it. I mean, how fortunate are we to have a football team like this, where you have this kid get this devastating injury and go on? And Dominic will tell you, I texted him, because I was doing the tree lighting for the Historical Society Saturday, when it was like 24/7, I texted him. I said, "This ain't looking good, come and light the tree." And he told me on the text, he said, "Nope, not happening." He says, "They're coming back." And he was right. And then I...
You'll keep the faith back.
So after I lit the tree, I went back and, "Oh, my God, they're catching up." I said, "Oh, yeah, you were right." So, you know, what a team we have. I mean, a couple miles to us south here, our hometown football team, just incredible. Friend of mine called me, one of the reporters for News 13, and he told me another sports story that, for the first time, and he checked with the Elias Sports Bureau, that we had two quarterbacks. We had Jeff Driscoll, who went to Haggerty, and we had Blake Bortles, who we know is the quarterback for the Jags. Both threw a touchdown pass in the NFL two weeks ago. That's never happened from two kids from the same town. So anybody that knows Blake and Jeff know those are two great kids. We all watched them in high school and they're like our kids and they're awesome. So, I mean, that's quite an accomplishment. And then also, some of you might know Andy Barquette, lives in Oviedo. He's the hitting coach for the Boston Red Sox. But we have a World Series, we have a World Series hitting coach, you know, yeah, World Series champion hitting coach among us. So, you know, just congratulations to all of those guys. Oviedo turns out athletes.
I just have to let you know, I took a picture with him with his World Series jersey on and my skin didn't burn off.
There you go. There you go, so...
But the Yankees are gonna get him next year.
Some good, some good sports stories. Tommy Minton, that's one of the good guys in the city. Great job for two years. We appreciate all your service and all your good counsel through the years. Tommy's a good guy, so have fun having those nights off. You know, we know that the LPA worked very hard. It's basically right under us and a lot of times we do take what they say very seriously and try to follow along with them. So good job, Tommy. And again, Merry Christmas, everybody. We'll see you in January and all the best.
All righty, Councilman Chudnow.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do want to thank other citizens for the support and elected me to council. It's a little different view from up here rather than from the chairs over on the side, but I think I'm gonna enjoy this new challenge. Also, just real quick, I had a chance to look at the, and I'm still looking at crime staffs. The crime staffs from January to June came out, had a semi-annual report, and Oviedo was down 9.2 percent.
How much?
9.2.
Wow.
Percent.
Since you've left?
Yeah, it's amazing.
It's a continuation, Mayor. It's just a continuation.
Okay, I'm just checking there. Just checking.
It was a good hands I left the department.
Walked right into that one, chief.
It did. Now it's too easy.
It's just a good hand I left the department in.
It is. You did an incredible job.
It is. It's the men and women at the department that are doing a fine job out there. They continue to do so.
That is awesome. Chief, anything else?
That's it.
Chief, while you're talking, Jeff, just real quick, I did get approached by some citizens, speaking of the police force, and they mentioned Officer Number 37. That's all they had on his badge. And did you pass along their gratitude? All right, thanks.
All righty, so anything else from anyone? Mr. Cobb, you have something to add?
Actually, Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, staying with the sports theme, Oviedo had three state champions over the fall semester.